Monday, March 8th, 2021, school board meeting. It is 6:02 and I will call our meeting to order. I will take a roll call, starting with Mr. Bryant.
Here.
Ms. Buck?
Here.
Mr. Derrick's?
Here.
Ms. Ostendorf?
Here.
Ms. Tower?
Here.
Ms. Tiff?
Here.
And Cher is here. So all seven school board members are here, including Superintendent Carson Anderson. We will go ahead and stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have asked Nikki Buck to share her mission statement this evening with us all.
The mission of the Red Wing Public Schools is to educate and inspire all students as they realize their full potential and become respectful, responsible, and productive citizens.
Thank you, thank you. Our meeting agenda has been posted in the Board Packet. Does anybody have any changes or additions to make this evening? All right, seeing none, I will look for a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Bryant, so moves.
Osten, or second?
Jim and Anna seconded. Any other discussion? All right, we'll take a roll call vote then for the agenda, starting with Nikki Buck.
Aye.
Mr. Derrick's?
Aye.
Ms. Ostendorf?
Aye.
Ms. Tower?
Aye.
Ms. Tiff?
Aye.
Mr. Bryant?
Aye.
And Cher votes aye. So the agenda passes as presented. The first item on our agenda is the educational plan. As always, it is in our Board Packet for reference. And recognitions and upcoming events is on the agenda next. Does anybody have anything that they would like to share?
I have two items, Pam, to share. First of all, have a February was Minnesota School Board Recognition Week. And as you know, I was out for a period of time and so I wasn't able to recognize school board members during that time. We will be sending out these certificates to each board member, thanking you for your service to the school board. I think I know more than most people how much time that you put into the jobs, the extra phone calls, the worry about votes coming up, you know, all those kinds of things. And so on behalf of the community, I'd like to thank you for your service on the board. The second item is recognition that Sherri Johnson was awarded as the Special Education Administrator of the Year by the Minnesota Association of, or Minnesota, sorry, Administrators of Special Education Group. That's a statewide group consisting of special ed administrators and they selected Sherri as the statewide recipient. So congratulations, Sherri.
Excellent news, thank you. Other recognitions or upcoming events? All right, seeing none, then we will move to public comment, which I have received none. Superintendent Anderson, have you received any public comment?
I did not.
Okay. So then the next item on our agenda is the resolution of non-concurrents. And I will, we have two people joining us this evening and I will turn it over to you, Carson Anderson, for a little bit of background and what is happening next.
Sure, I've had the pleasure of working with Red Wing's Native American Parent Committee since I've been here. It's a group of caring and passionate individuals who are there to represent the best interests of American Indian children. This year, we have two co-chairs, as far as I understand. Margot Bellinger, who's on the call today, as well as Brooke McGill. And each year, the committee reviews a resolution of concurrence or non-concurrents. And it essentially indicates the parent committee's perspective as far as whether or not the school district is meeting the needs of Native American children. Generally, there is a vote of concurrence. This year, there was a vote of non-concurrents. And I can understand why. And it's really a good opportunity for us to hear directly from the parent committee and then for us to kind of work on a plan on how to address the deficiencies that are recognized. So Margot and Tina, if we could pass it over to you and then we'll take it after you're done.
Tina's going to start us off. And I have, I don't know how many of you have read the letter, but I will put the letter up on, under a presentation so everybody can see the same letter and I'll read that letter aloud. So, go ahead, Tina. You're muted. Okay, there, I got it. Okay, we want to thank you. Oh, first of all, my name is Tina Jefferson. I'm a tribal member and I'm foster care to my grandchildren who are in the school district. We want to thank you for allowing us this opportunity to come before you today to express our long-awaited responses for our Native American children enrolled in this district. After many failed attempts since 1977, we are here to inform you that we are educating ourselves on a better system of educating our communities about our culture, heritage, history, and status within this education system. It is our goal to create an inclusive system for our Native children and their support systems. As many have fallen through the proverbial cracks, this is no longer acceptable to us. After studying the federal state statutes, we observed many factors that have gone unnoticed by the district's ability to address or implement these statutes into our education system. Therefore, we realize the importance of our involvement now and into the future. We can no longer stand back and watch our children being left behind. We ask that you work with us to create a better system with electives in Native Studies and language and teachings about First Americans as required by law. We are in the beginning stages of our newly reformed Native Parent Committee. We will be working on several goals obtainable in the very near and far future to better serve the needs of our Native families and their children and broaden the understanding of what, hold on, of what is needed to be done. And we thank you for your time and we look forward to working with you on these issues. Unmute. It may take a minute for my computer to get this up. Can anybody see it?
Not yet, but sometimes it takes a little bit of time.
Okay. So more or less, this is the letter that was sent to the school board and to the state of Minnesota. So if anything, I'll just let it load and start reading right down. Red Wing School Board, and then it addresses you. This letter was addressed to you on February 17th, 2021. Pursuant to Minnesota Statute, Section 124D, .78, subdivision 1, the Red Wing American Indian Parent Advisory Committee, the AIPAC, is issuing a resolution of non-concurrents for the 2021 school year. This committee has voted and determined Red Wing School, Public Schools is not meeting the needs of American Indian students. Being in compliance with guidelines set forth by the Minnesota Department of Education and the Office of American Indian Education, we submit these recommendations. One, beginning school year 2021, 2022, and each year thereafter, the AIPAC requests a written accounting for all funds available to or received by Red Wing Public Schools, either earmarked for or as a result of American Indian children being enrolled in the Red Wing Public Schools. This includes, but is not limited to, Johnson O'Malley Funds, Title 6, I think it is, Title 1, Indian Aid, additional state or federal funding, and any grants opportunities presented to the Red Wing Public Schools concerning American Indian students. Two, beginning opening week for staff in the year 2021 and each opening week thereafter, diversity, anti-bias training will be provided to all teachers and staff in the Red Wing Public Schools. Including this training, opening week would help make Red Wing Public Schools comply with the Minnesota Due North Education Plan. Number three, pursuant to Minnesota Statute, Section 124D, .77, Red Wing Public Schools shall establish a plan to have American Indian teachers in the school district by school year 2122. At a minimum, the Red Wing Public Schools shall establish a working relationship with input from American Indian community members in all academical areas, for example, art, literature, language, social sciences, agricultural, history, and et cetera. Including staff diversity is a priority in the Minnesota Due North Education Plan. Number four, in place by school year 2021, the Red Wing Public School shall create a four-credit class at the high school, including Native culture, history, and language. At a minimum, sorry, minimum. We want this Red Wing Public School teachers to establish a working relationship with all American Indian community members and/or Prairie Island Indian community. And the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee has a goal to offer Dakota language as an option to German and Spanish for all students at the Red Wing High School. Number five, the Red Wing Public School shall partner with the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee in the writing and managing of grants available to American Indian students within the Red Wing Public School. As per the Minnesota Department of Ed and OAIE guidelines, we have sent our recommendations to the OAIE and expect a written response from the Red Wing Public School Board to each of the above recommendations within 60 days of this receipt of this letter. The American Indian Parent Advisory Committee is making itself available to dialogue with the school board subcommittee who is assigned to respond to this letter. Sincerely, the Red Wing American Indian Parent Advisory Committee, Brooke McGill, Margot Bellinger, Babs Knutson, Phil White, Tina Jefferson, Tammy Wells Garcia, Nikki Buck, Rocky Lafferty, and Angelica Bennett.
Thank you, Tina and Margot. And again, I've never had a vote of non-concurrents before and so I'm learning, you know, as we go. But I think Margot said it correctly, that we have 60 days to respond. I'm assuming it's from February 17th, you know, not the presentation tonight. So, you know, I'd rather respond earlier rather than later. So I think that makes sense. What I'm going to suggest is that, you know, I write an initial draft of a response and then channel it through a committee. I don't know if it would be the Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Committee or the Equity Team, perhaps a subcommittee of the board, ad hoc or regular. And then we could work with the Native American Parent Committee to kind of hash out some of the details. I do think that in general, we can and should, you know, comply with the six different items. But there are always details. And, you know, the details are, is where we'll need to kind of work together collaboratively to see what makes the most sense and when. So, again, that's what I'm suggesting, is that, you know, we proceed that way. And I'd really like to present this to the board, a rough draft to the board, after getting, you know, collaborative work with the parent committee and others. I'd like to present it on April 5th, which would meet the 60-day timeline.
The Equity Team doesn't meet again or isn't scheduled to meet again until April 5th. So I think that ordinarily would be a good committee for it to go through, but in the interest of time, either that committee would need to have an additional meeting or it would have to go through someone else.
Yeah, I would guess that this is important enough to perhaps have an extra meeting, you know, before April 5th, if the board thinks that would be the logical place to take this.
Go ahead, Holly.
First of all, I'd really like to thank the Advisory Committee for bringing this to our attention and for asking us to be partners and asking us to do better, because we can do better. And it hurts my heart tremendously that it has got to the point of a non-concurrent, feeling vote, status. And in that, the things that you have recommended for us to do, I see as steps in the right direction, but I know that we can do more and we can do better. And so I'm looking forward to the partnership with you and to really get this strategically aligned with what is best, considering the community of Red Wing was founded by Native Americans and that we are visitors on the land, and I say we as a white person. And so with that history and that information and all of the knowledge that goes back to this, I want to start this in kindergarten, not just a high school class. I would like the program of studies to look at something like making it a required class that students have to go through credits for, four credits for Native American and Dakota language and everything that encompasses the tribes around this area from past until now. I think it's that important. And the fact that Red Wing has struggled with equity work, again, hurts my heart. And I'm so proud that you are bringing this to us and that this board may have a chance to do it right. My one question I have for you is the funds that you are looking to see, do you want the past funds and how they've been spent? Which is fine, I'm just wanting to clarify, like, where have funds gone? Or looking at how we're spending them now, because this is new to me too. And so I want to learn with you. So that's my question.
Yeah, if I, oh, go ahead, Margot.
Carson could answer also, but I think what the committee's underlying, they want to know where the money has been going and why you feel that there is, that everything was okay before and how the money was applied in the past. So I, and we also want to see what is also earmarked for this year and years in the future. So just so we've got an idea of what the money has been being spent on and maybe it needs to be reapplied in a different way if it's not applied correctly. If that sounds, Tina or Nikki, if that's how you perceive this also? Not only that, but also coming from a standpoint of, we'd like to see this grow and we want to help it grow and we'd like to get grants and grant writers. And we see something that, you know, we could possibly be the model for the communities, for a school district on how to set a good, let's teach the history of everyone and everything and be inclusive and have other curriculum available for other cultures. This is just a stepping point too, because we've talked with others about theirs too and how we can try to rectify the things that have gone wrong in the school system and so one-sided. We need it more, it's a community, we are not just one people, we are a bunch of different people. And it'd be nice to see that culture and that brought back to the school system. But yeah, and then as far as like the money is concerned, we just want to know how much has been coming in and where it's been going to. We, as a community, we don't know if some's going to our education department, if Paul, or we don't know where all of this sits because we have no idea who's getting what. And we know there's not a lot of money there. And, but we just want to be able to redirect it to the right areas so that we can, can benefit.
Sorry, yeah.
That's okay, that's all right, that's all I have to say.
Yeah, if I could add that, you know, when I first started here, I think a lot of our, at the time it was called Title VII, now it's called Title VI. But a lot of that money was actually meshed with our Title I funding that serves all kids. Thankfully, Tori Campbell and Darcy Menard approached me and asked questions about how their Title VII allocation was working. And that conversation led to a lot of other conversations. And in the end, we turned out, we made significant changes in how our Title VII dollars were spent. Fast forward a little bit, the state of Minnesota added fairly significant AMI aid or American Indian aid, which is a state source. We get about $80,000 per year now in regard to that. And it would be, I know we've shared, you know, some information, you know, previously with parent committees, but membership of those committees change, you know, with time. And I think it would be very easy for Jackie to run a report, at least since we had our last finance software conversion, which was several years ago. So we could easily run, you know, those reports for past years and of course, any subsequent years. So that's just one, you know, and that'll be included in my response to this letter is, you know, this is what, maybe we can just give you the reports right then, you know, with our response, but also make a commitment that, you know, we can provide that, you know, more routinely in the future.
I just want to add really quick, I'd be happy to do a subcommittee or an ad hoc committee in support of this, Carson, to work on this. If, you know, the timelines of the other committees don't match up or if there's something strategically you want to look at in terms of how you want this and how we should approach this. You gave us so many good recommendations, it's very exciting and thank you.
And I'm super excited to hear, you know, a joint partnership because as we talk about instituting some of these things, we're going to need your expertise and your advice on how to formulate a lot of the plan that you have envisioned. The other thing I'd want to really make sure that we're able to do is to sustain the programming. So, you know, that's where the grant writing is going to come in and, you know, how do we take those dollars and make sure that whatever we implement initially is something that we can sustain? Because we don't want this to be a one-year and done kind of thing. This needs to be incorporated. And so how do we do that in a mindful way to be respectful to your ask and our duty? But we don't want to do this halfway. We're going to do it well and we're going to do it the whole way, but we need to make sure that it's financially stable and can move forward. So thank you for your partnership. Jennifer?
Yes, just to echo Holly and Pam, thank you so much for bringing this up and thank you for bringing up all of these ideas, they are much needed. I agree that with Holly that we need to have a special committee, that this isn't, this is too big for something just for the Equity Committee to take on. They have a lot of other responsibilities and I think we really need to be focused and intentional on what we are doing here. And so I think in order to make that partnership, it'd be important to have another committee of board members.
I would just like to make a comment, just so you guys can understand this a little better. Nikki has gave you dates in the past and I just want you to look at the statutes. And I think you guys got the documents that also we reviewed for, from the state of Minnesota in regards to, I think it was attached to that letter. The, I can't remember the name of it, but it was the self-assessment rubnik. And there is statutes attached within that document as defining the purpose and understanding certain things. And I would like for the board to review them statutes, if they could, or whoever is going to. And it will give you a better understanding. This policy was established in 1977. So when you guys say that you were sending letters of that everything was going well in this district, as a student of this district that started here in 1979, and I have children from 36 down to 16 right now, and there has been nothing through the school district for my children or me as a student going to this school. So it just seems kind of odd that you guys were filing a document that said that everything was good here, which in hand, as, like I said, as a student of the district and having multiple children through the district, I have seven children in my homes, or had seven children in my home. So it's not like I, I mean, I've been going through this for generations. So I just wish you could read all them statutes and understand it a little better because some of us have seen, we lived it. I lived in cities, I knew what this meant. And I don't think you guys comprehend what it all entails and them statutes explain a lot of it. So it just would help if you guys could read that, thank you.
Say, Margot, I'm not sure if I or we have a copy of the self-evaluation that the parent committee completed. I may have missed it, but is there a way that you could resend that to me and then I can send it to the full board?
Sure, I can send you the assessment that we reviewed and then that has everything right in it, but.
Yeah, that'd be great.
I think it is attached to the letter that you guys got. It was, there was three documents attached to the bottom of that letter and I think that's in there. So. But if not, I can get. Margot, maybe you can send a copy to Nikki and then she can email. Yeah, I can send it to Nikki and Kristen and they can get it.
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be great, just that, and I can look as well, but let's, if we could both do it, then for sure we'll get it.
Yeah, I'll do that.
Wonderful, any, anything else? No, all right. Well, Tina and Margaret, thank you so much for being here with us this evening. And Superintendent Anderson, if you could head up, putting together a subcommittee and getting that going as soon as possible, that would be great. Thank you.
Sounds good.
All right.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And then I'll throw it right back to you, Superintendent. And then I'll throw it right back to you Superintendent Anderson for, uh, the return to school update.
Yeah, I have a whole bunch of information included in the packet. I'm just going to talk about a couple of items. But, uh, Shonda Jorgensen, uh, George Nimminich and I are all here to answer any questions that you might have. Uh, let's see here. Think I'm just missing, uh, one piece here. So give me just a minute. I need to, to look something up. All right. So in the, the latest, uh, background information for return to school, uh, we have the Education Minnesota survey results, uh, about returning to school. So I included, uh, the summary information, uh, from that. Uh, talks about the, the teacher, um, preferences in terms of, uh, their, or kind of gauging their opinions about coming back to school. This was before the last board meeting. Uh, so that survey is included as an attachment. Uh, Paul Hartman did follow up on, uh, the concern expressed about mask wearing during activities. There is, uh, there, there have been some questions about social distancing. And just a reminder for grades K through four, we're still planning to follow the six foot social distancing guidelines. Cause we have all classes set up with the teachers and so we want to continue that. Uh, for grades five through twelve, it's recommended, highly recommended that three foot guidelines are followed. Uh, but that there's a six foot distance between all students and, you know, adults. Uh, George, uh, Shonda and Brent made good progress on food service arrangements. Uh, but you know, George will be here in a minute, uh, to discuss that further, I'm sure. Fifth and sixth grade, uh, class sizes on online only teachers. I wish I had good news. We posted for the online only teachers. We did have four people who expressed interest. Uh, but they have not applied. So we do have concerns about fifth and sixth grade in terms of how that will look. Uh, the worst case is that we could do a four plus one model, uh, where the fifth and sixth grade teachers would teach the kids in their class and teach the online only, uh, kids. That's what the high school teachers are doing. Uh, but we are really hoping that we can make some shifts in those classes. So we can have some online only, uh, uh, kids with online only teachers. So again, we're, we're going to have to look at option B and option C to try to make that happen. But I wanted to be upfront with our, our status as of today. Uh, great news on vaccinations. Uh, we believe that all staff members have been offered the first dose of the vaccine and many have already received their second dose. Uh, by the time many kids or more kids come back to in person, uh, I think all or nearly all staff members will have been given that opportunity. Uh, there were some, um, staff members who had to delay, uh, taking, uh, one or the first or second dose, you know, for personal reasons. Uh, but I believe that we will have that offered, uh, to everyone, uh, before more kids come back in person. I will say though, that, um, as I mentioned in the board packet, uh, I do have concerns about March twenty sixth. Uh, that's a Friday. Uh, and that's because we have two hundred sixty-six staff members currently in line to get their second, uh, vaccination during the week of March twenty second, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. We don't know how many staff members are scheduled for each of those days. Uh, but Wednesday, uh, the test is being given in Zambroda Mizepa. Uh, Thursday, the test is being given in Red Wing and Friday, the test is in Cannon Falls. So our working assumption is that most staff members, a significant number of those staff members will get the vaccinations on Thursday in Red Wing, uh, or Friday in Cannon Falls. So as you may know, uh, there are more employees who are missing work after the second dosage of the vaccine. Uh, usually symptoms start twelve to thirty-six hours after getting that second dose. So if we have staff members on Thursday, uh, getting the second dose, uh, they may or may not be ill on Friday. So, you know, the, a couple of ways of addressing, well, three ways of addressing it. We could wait and see, um, how many staff members call in sick. Uh, the positive is that we might just go ahead as planned. Uh, the negative is that Friday morning, uh, I might be making a call saying, sorry, uh, no school today. Uh, the second, uh, possibility would be to, uh, call that Friday a transition day. We have one left, uh, and that means there'd be no school for students, but that, uh, staff members would still report uh, in order to do work, um, with regard to bringing kids back to in-person instruction. And then the last option would be to simply call it a distance learning day. So we don't have to decide which of those three options we're going to do tonight. Although, you know, probably the sooner the better as far as planning purposes. Uh, and my thinking is, you know, with two hundred and sixty-six individuals, uh, if even ten percent of them are not able to work, you know, that's twenty-six or twenty-seven kids. And, uh, we cannot operate, uh, a normal schooling with that many people gone. Uh, Rice County told Northfield Public Schools to expect about thirty percent of staff members not being able to, to work, um, after that second dosage. So, um, that's, uh, one big issue. Uh, there are some timing issues and, you know, I think, um, maybe I can pass it over to George here in just a few minutes. And he can talk about some of the concerns that high school staff members have in terms of the timing. Uh, we do have, um, uh, we had some questions about staff mental health. And so I did try to summarize, uh, the work that our elementary and secondary principals are doing to help address that. Uh, and it's listed in the, the board packet. Uh, again, we're not a mental health therapist. We, we don't do assessments ourselves. But obviously we can do some things, um, to help, uh, relieve the stress for our students and staff members. So, um, I don't know if you want to ask, ask some questions now, or if we should hand it over to Shonda to talk about social distancing and/or George to talk about timing concerns. Uh, but we're, we're ready and, and, uh, able to, to answer those questions or give more information. You know, um, Shonda, I think you're on the call, um, you know, until there's some questions.
Oh, go ahead, Holly. Yeah, I did have my name in the queue.
Sounds good.
Okay. Hi, Shonda. Hi, George. Um, thank you for coming tonight. Uh, first question is, is kind of one of a, a logistics one. Um, did you respond to Mr. Nemminich's email, Carsten, in reference to what his concerns were prior to bringing it to the board?
Yeah, we've, um, uh, I'd have to reread the email message because it was sent maybe early last week. Uh, George and I, yeah, George and I have talked on numerous occasions about many of those things. And, uh, when I took the original proposal on February sixteenth, I talked to George, you know, before that meeting and kind of, you know, incorporated his, his ideas for, uh, you know, uh, the recommendation for bringing kids back to school. So, yeah, George and I have, have spoken repeatedly, um, you know, for, well, throughout the whole year, but especially the last month or six weeks as we were, uh, formulating plans.
So back to my logistical piece, um, my concern is that putting somebody's personal email in a board packet to you might make people hesitate to send you things that they feel strongly about, that you may put those in a board packet. So when I'm saying logistical, like, I don't know whether or not George knew you were going to put it in the board packet. Um, however, um, it looked like it was supposed to get to us for the workshop last week. And, you know, there's a, there's a lot going on with this. So when you and Pam and Jim made the agenda for Tuesday morning, um, there's no resolution or there's no recommendation based on what you're asking us to look through today. But there's one from George, which makes it look like it's George's recommendation.
Oh, yeah, sure.
And it's not.
Yeah, I think that's a, a fair comment. Um, uh, you know, I'm sure that when George originally sent it to me, he, you know, I, George, you probably weren't assuming that the actual verbatim email message would be in there. Uh, but I will say that, um, you know, George and I communicate often about this. And, um, uh, you know, I, especially with the return to school plan, I'm a big believer in making sure that all points of view are heard. And, uh, there, there are no right or wrong answers on this. And I know that George is hearing a lot from, uh, his staff members. I'm not sure if George is hearing from parents and students as much, maybe. Uh, but certainly from his staff members, and I think he's expressing their voices. So, um, you know, like I say, George and I collaborate a lot. Uh, the original recommendation from February sixteenth matched, uh, Georgia's recommendation at that time. And, um, understandably, uh, the board, uh, did not follow that recommendation. Of course, uh, at the time, we had that two-week staggered start requirement by the state. Uh, so as of February sixteenth, that was the governor's order, you have two weeks. Because of that, you know, the original recommendation at April fifth and April nineteenth, bringing kids back. And understandably, board members thought, geez, April nineteenth seems awfully late. Let's move those things, you know, ahead two weeks. Made sense. Uh, then of course, on February seventeenth, we got the updated guidance that showed, um, uh, that we didn't have to do the two-week, uh, staggered start. So, you know, uh, I think it depends on the different perspective, uh, that you might have. Uh, you know, my perspective is that, you know, we've already announced the plan to parents. You know, kids have expectations, parents have expectations about coming back on certain days. Um, and so that's why, you know, my thinking is, you know, I think we need to acknowledge that. Um, at the same time, there are, uh, significant logistical issues that I think George expressed, uh, very well in, in his email. Um, and, um, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm happy that our administrators are, are willing and able to, to share their perspective. Cause these are big decisions for all of us. And we want to share all the information to, to make the right decision. So, um, you know, it's kind of a roundabout way of answering your question, Holly, but hopefully that gives some context.
I think it just goes back to my, are you making a recommendation other than what we have going forward? Or are we just supposed to be discussing? What?
Yeah, my, um, uh, well, there, we've had a lot of questions from, uh, board members and others about a variety of issues. So I tried to include all that information in the return to school plan tonight. Um, if, um, uh, you know, my recommendation is that we have to do something for that Friday of the week of March twenty second, uh, which would be Friday, the twenty-sixth. Cause my prediction is that, uh, we will not have enough staff members that day, uh, for in-person learning. Um, and so, you know, if it was up to me solely, uh, we would have a transition day on Friday, uh, March twenty-sixth. Um, uh, uh, alternatively, if that wasn't acceptable to board, then another possibility would be to convert that to a distance only day. Um, and, uh, so that, that would be my recommendation tonight. Um, however, I, I do think it's important to, uh, recognize the concerns of, of staff members that have, have spoken to George over the last few weeks. Uh, and we need to hear those concerns. And that's really what George was expressing with that email. You know, it's a, um, you know, discussing the, the concerns that he's heard directly from staff members.
Uh, Jennifer.
Uh, I was just wondering if we could hear more specific details on, um, getting the building ready and where we are on that. Um, either from Shonda or George.
I, I can speak to that a little bit, uh, Jennifer. I, uh, so as far as like the furniture and things like that, things have been going actually smoother than I had originally anticipated, which is good. Um, I spoke with, uh, Al Hartnik this morning about where we are at after the week of break. And we did get quite a bit of furniture, uh, moved, which is good. Um, so, so in that sense, I think we're, we're doing, we're doing well. I, I, you know, we, we've got some time here, obviously before the twenty-second. Um, and so, yeah, as far as, as far as the moving of things, that's going well. Um, my big concern, I guess I'll go back to the, uh, the, uh, the concern I had was, has more to do with the, the vaccinations. I got ninety-four staff. We're going to have that second vaccine Wednesday, Thursday or Friday of that first week back. And, and that's my big concern is that even if, let's just say a third of the, uh, people get sick, uh, from that, uh, we're going to have quite a few people out. And I don't know if I can cover with subs. That's, that's going to be kind of the issue I'm, I'm, I'm more concerned with. We haven't had quite the issue that the elementaries have with sub, uh, coverage. Because I have staff who could cover internally. Uh, it's a little easier with, given our schedule and things to cover, um, uh, with internal staff. But even at, at a third, even if we took a third of our staff per day, let's just say we divided that up. Uh, you're, you're looking at, at a significant number of staff out that, that would be difficult to cover. So that, those, that's my biggest concern is, is late that first week, if we were to come back on the twenty-second. Really, you're looking at Thursday and Friday, I'm, I'm really worried that we're going to have, um, too many staff out and, uh, to, to have kind of a, a quality day of school, let's put it that way. Um, so, uh, and I, I was glad to hear that, uh, Superintendent Anderson is thinking about using one of those, uh, uh, extra days that we have from the state uh, as a possibility to kind of help with that on a Friday. Um, but that's really my biggest concern, uh, with, with, uh, with starting at the earlier date of the, the twenty-second. Uh, the other, the other issue, well, when you look at that, you know, the governor's guidance came out the, the day after we made the decision to start with this two, two-week staggered start, which, you know, it is what it is. But, um, since we don't have to do that, my, my thought was, would it not be best to start? Uh, one of the other logistical things is that we, uh, April fifth is the start of the fourth quarter. And it would be a much cleaner start for the building if we could start, um, on Monday, the fifth, uh, with everybody, uh, coming back. And, uh, just so everybody knows, uh, we, uh, we sent out a survey. Some of you probably received it as parents. Um, the, uh, a survey, uh, just asking our students, are you coming back to school? Are you, uh, going to be staying, uh, distant, um, as a distance learner? And, uh, right now, with just a little bit under the two-thirds of our, uh, student population, uh, reported, uh, we're at about eighty percent coming back, twenty percent, uh, staying distance. Uh, so, um, so with that, we're probably looking at somewhere around nine hundred plus students going to be in the building. And, uh, it just seems like if we started on the fifth, we could start with everybody back that, that first day. That's the start of the fourth quarter. And, uh, it would be night, it would be clean. Normally a quarter is not a big deal, uh, because we've been on a semester schedule. But as you all know, uh, our quarters have become semesters. So, uh, it, it just, it, it, to, to me, it seems like it would be a lot cleaner for our, for our, uh, uh, our student body and our staff if we could just start it on the fifth. And, and that's why I go back to the governor's guidance. If, you know, if, if we don't have to do the staggered start. And I completely understand why we would, we would have wanted to start on the twenty-second, uh, given, uh, given that staggered start. But since we don't really need to do that, I was thinking it might be just a lot cleaner to start it on the fifth. So that was another thought I had. The other thing I was thinking about too was, uh, just the mitigation aspect. Um, you know, we, we just had spring break and a lot of people were traveling. And, uh, you know, you hear from other. And, uh, you know, you hear from other districts and Shonda can probably speak to this a little bit, um, more. But, um, you know, that with, with the travel, there have been like, I'll, I'll just give you an example. I know in Chaska, they, they just had a, a outbreak of a, a, a different variant of the virus. Um, you know, we don't know what, what, uh, what our folks are bringing back in necessarily. But, uh, would it be more prudent to wait, give ourselves a, a few more weeks, uh, of, of hybrid? Uh, and then, you know, with that extra few weeks, we can, we, number one, we'll have, our entire staff will have gotten, uh, vaccinated with two vaccines. Uh, and we'll have given them time so that, uh, and that we can, we could start on the 5th and basically start fairly safely for our staff and I think our students as well. Um, and then, uh, you know, as far as, uh, like I said, the building logistics, I, I think, I think we're going to be okay, uh, regardless of when we start. Uh, and that's a big thanks to our, our maintenance crew that's been, uh, doing a wonderful job of, uh, putting things together. Um, the one thing that I would say from a standpoint of, of, um, and, and th- these are small things, but I'll just, you know, they'll, they'll become kind of just kind of the, the things that can get in the way. But because we're, if we started on the 22nd and, and that's still the third quarter, uh, things like the lunchroom, we'd have to redo the seating charts in the lunchroom. Cause we're going to have to do seating chart, uh, lunches because of the contact tracing that we're going to have to do. So that's, that's one of the things we'll, um, uh, we'll have to kind of be aware of. And, um, uh, we would just have to do the seating charts over again after two weeks. And as it looks, maybe that will be less than, I mean, it's, we're talking a matter of days really. Uh, um, if, if we have that Friday. And then of course, the following Friday is, is already a planned day out. So really we're talking about two, four-day weeks. And, and really with the distance learning in there as well, it's really, we're down to about six days. So what we're gaining i- in my opinion, isn't enough to warrant, um, starting that early when we have the opportunity to start cleanly on the 5th. I, that's just my, my opinion and my thought on it. Um, but, um, uh, so that's why I would, I would ask if, if we could rethink maybe starting on the 5th rather than on the 22nd.
Anna, you're in the queue.
I'm just wondering, um, Shonda and maybe George too, if you can talk about that three-foot spacing, is that going to be feasible? I think that's something that we talked about, you know, at the, the previous meeting with, when we have 80% of our student body back in person, can we, in some of those more full classrooms at the high school, can we have them full and still have students three feet apart?
Um, I thi- I think it'll be easy. Um, in a lot of classrooms, there's going to be some that we're going to have to look at and see how many students really are going to be in there. Can we do it? Um, my goal this week is to go through, kind of like I did last summer and did the whole six-foot distancing with my six-foot pipe. I'm going to get a three-foot pipe and, you know, really kind of hand up, you know, um, figure out what the numbers are to make it easier for George and his crew to figure out how many people we can get. The one thing that's going to impact though is the, uh, space that teachers will have. So if we've got a classroom where we have 35 students, the staff member now, their, their room to move around is going to get smaller and smaller. So it's how much do we want to encroach on them? Because I, I would like to see, and I, we're trying to work it with custodial staff is that teachers should be able to be in their room and be six feet from students at all times. Uh, now obviously they're going to go up and help, but if they have a space where they can teach and they know for sure they're six feet away, um, is what, what we're really going to do. So I, it's, it's possible, um, it's going to look a lot different, obviously. Um, and we'll just have to go and see the spaces that we can do it. And if we have to adjust by a couple of people, you know, George is good at that. So I figure we, you know, we'll work together to make it happen.
Yeah, we, we do have, uh, uh, you know, I will say, Anna, we do have some classrooms that are larger. And we, like you said, we talked about that before. Uh, I, I feel pretty confident that we'll be able to make that work, uh, because, uh, we do have, uh, still a number of students that are staying distant, so that, that may impact some of that number. And then the other, um, the other part of it is we can, uh, we can maximize space in those classrooms. Uh, we've been pretty good at, at, at kind of making sure that everything's, uh, up to code, you might say, and, and, uh, uh, making sure that we have enough space.
Jennifer.
I noticed on the newsletter that March 30th was supposed to be a distance learning day due to ACT testing. Is that still something or was that a misprint?
No, that, uh, I think that's, uh, that's that Tuesday, correct? If I'm not mistaken, yeah. That, that is still a, a, a day, it'll be distance for all students except for those taking the ACT. That's correct.
Other questions for George or Shonda? Comments? Anna?
Well, we'll just see what happens here. I would like to make a motion to move the start of in-person for the high school to, uh, the quarter break, April 5th, not have the two-week staggered start.
Mr. Bryant, you're in the queue. No, we need a second on that motion first. Yeah. Anyone want to second that motion?
I'll second it.
All right, motion made by Anna, seconded by Holly. Now, Mr. Bryant.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, very dangerous slope we're going down right now. We promised people that we would start school on 22nd, even though we couldn't start them earlier. Now you're going to push them on another four weeks, so you go back to February 16th. So we're going out 45 days, but for some reason we're not quite ready after having it out for, uh, 30-some days to the 22nd, um, so now probably even longer than 45. The parents are, kids are ready to go back to school. We heard the lobby clerk again today in the emails. Um, I'm, I am not in favor of delaying it any longer. We need to get these kids back in school. They're long overdue. The mental health is a concern for me. The best, best educational practices that we want them to have is we, we all agree be in school. Um, you know, I, I can understand the, uh, Friday, the 26th, but, uh, uh, you know, I can, I can agree with that because I know people that have had the second shot. And it affects everybody differently, let's be honest. Not everybody will, and that's why they have percentage down. But I am not going to put my name on any motion to approve the change of what the parents and students already been notified on to go forward with starting school on the 22nd of March. Um, so I, I will not be in favor of that, uh, motion for the benefit of our children who need to be back in school. So, thank you.
Uh, Arlen.
Thank you. I'm on top of the fence and I don't know which side I'm going to jump off. Um, I'm really torn on this because we have, as Jim stated here, uh, told p- parents that we're going to take these students starting the 22nd. But I also think the points that George put out in that email are very valid, all, many of them. Um, had I had that information in front of me and we didn't have that two-week rolling start, I would be fully in support of going to the April 5th for everybody. On the flip side, what George was saying there, putting all those other students in the school, we're only put, I don't want to, that's not the right word, or only. We are putting three grades into the high school from hybrid to full or one plus four, four plus one on the 22nd. And so, if those numbers are right, 80% are going to be in-person and 20% will be distance. Um, we're going to have roughly an extra 80 students per class in my estimation. I'm, my numbers could be off for three grades. So that is going to be adding 240 students to the building for those two weeks in between. And then we'll be adding another 480 total student count on those others. I shouldn't say students added, but I, I hopefully understand what I'm getting to is the density of the building on a given day will increase, um, roughly 80 students per class or per grade in my estimation, just running some quick numbers in my head. I, I really want our staff to be fully vaccinated. I know that's not going to happen. They've all had the opportunity to get the vaccine. I had my vaccine also last week. Um, I won the lottery and, uh, what a relief it was to be able to do that. Um, I get it. And I also want to jump out and say, hey, I'm vaccinated, I can wear my mask and I won't feel like I'm going to die if I get COVID. Um, but it's not time yet. I gotta stay back for another three week, three and a half weeks, plus give that time for that second vaccination. I just don't know where I'm going on this, I really don't. And, but I do think we need to realize what the, we are putting in the classroom is not, um, 80 on six grades, it's 80 extra, density of 80 students more in three grades for those two weeks. And so everybody do what you are, I'll make my decision when the vote comes here, whether I'll go along with Anna's motion or not. But, uh, I really think we have an obligation to not throw another thing out, out there on the parents that we're going to change that date back two weeks. And I do think we'd, as Jim said, I do think we need to address that, that, uh, um, Thursday and Friday. And that's, maybe we, maybe we can flip, uh, Wednesday and the fourth one to a Thursday. And then you have to make the decision what to do on the Friday. And then we're finding out the following week, we got ACT testing, so it's a distance learning day already. So, the, everybody make your decision, I'm going to respect all of you for whatever you decide. I hope you, uh, respect me, whatever I decide, and I will make my decision, I'm sure, within a few minutes here.
Holly. Uh, thank you, um, Madam Chair. I seconded the motion because I'm not done thinking about it yet. But, um, and I will, I will quantify with and, you have all made very, very good points. And I don't discount the fact that people are counting on March 22nd. And they have told their children, their children are excited. My question is to Shonda, how many people do we have scheduled during the week of March 22nd to have a second vaccination in the district?
We offered it to 266 people. Um, we had 218 slots that week, so I don't know who it is or, you know, who got it or who didn't. Um, and so tops 218 people will get it.
And that's E12, all staff?
All staff, yep.
So it's not just?
No, um, let's see if we can break it down a little bit. So, a total of 266, we have one at Cobble, 28 at Sunnyside, 31 at Burnside, 12 at Jefferson, 41 at Twin Bluff, 94 at the high school, four at Tower View and three at River Bluff. So it's spread out across the entire district.
Can people use COVID sick days if they have symptomatic reactions?
That I don't know.
I'm just, I'm just asking.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I don't, I don't know. I always tell them to go talk to Amy French.
Okay. Okay, so that's what I wanted to know. Thank you, Shonda.
Yep.
Karsten?
Yeah, I just have a point of clarification. I know that Anna's motion, uh, did mention, uh, in-person learning, but I'm assuming that, that both Anna and Holly meant four plus one learning, uh, because that'll match the rest of the, the grades at the high school. Is that fair to say, Anna and, and Holly? And I might be violating some, you know, norms here, maybe it takes an amendment, you know, or something like that. But I just wanted to clarify for my own purposes.
Yes, I was just suggesting that instead of having the two start dates, we go to one, but everything else remaining the same in terms of the four plus one, that, that structure.
Thank you.
Uh, Jennifer, did you want to weigh in? I don't want to put you on the spot, but you and I have yet to weigh in. So I want to make sure everybody has an opportunity to speak before we call the vote.
Um, yeah, I can, I, I, I'm struggling. I agree with what Arlen said. Um, I really appreciate all of the input, um, that George brought forward. Um, and I really want to, um, make it, um, a successful start as the kids return. Um, and I think, you know, our job is to provide the best education we can possible for the students. And I just wonder if waiting, um, and bringing everyone back on April 5th is doing that, um, instead of March 22nd. I struggle because also, um, and you can look at it both ways, but, um, we only really would have, um, is it one, just three or four days, additional days on the March 20th, if we bring them back March 22nd? Um, or is it five? I'm not sure, I didn't do, but anyway, three days where they would not be there. Um, and so I'm just, you know, you can look at it both ways, um, whether that's good or bad, um, in bringing the kids back. But, uh, we did make a promise to our families that this is when school was going to start. However, we have additional information now that we did not have then. Um, I really like the idea of having the staff completely vaccinated. So, uh, I'm with Arlen all the way, I'm on the fence right now. Um, uh, you know, it, it, it could go either way.
I, I just like to point out really quick, um, that week, the 22nd, that also includes, includes 15 bus drivers. So it's not just district staff, it's people bringing our kids to and from school. So I just wanted to add that.
And that's toward the end of the week, right, for that second vaccination?
Yeah, it, they go on Wednesday, Thursday or Friday.
Okay. So I guess I'm the only one that hasn't really spoken yet. And George, I thank you for bringing these six points, um, forward and for Karsten to share them with us. Um, but we've had, you know, we made the decision on February 16th. So we've had since the morning of the 17th to prepare to have our students to come back. So that's five full weeks. Um, and I think that we need to give our staff more credit for being able to make our buildings ready for our students, um, to be ready, our parents are ready. Um, and, and I understand that we need to very carefully balance the needs of staff with the needs of students. But we haven't been talking about the importance of what students need right now. They've, their parents are begging us to get them into school. Um, while it is only a few more days for those three cohorts to come back, um, those several days that those students can come back are significantly meaningful to those students who get to come back and who are already counting on March 22nd. Um, our senior class has not all been in school for a full year together. That is impactful and, um, we need to think about what their needs are. Not just educationally, but socially and mental health-wise. I can tell you as a parent of a senior that the mental health toll that is going on in our community is significant. It's not easily charted, it's, you can't put it easily into a pie graph. But I will tell you that our kids are hurting and they need to be in physical presence with other people. We are not meant to be isolated individuals. That is not who we are as a community, as red wing, as human beings. Our teachers need to be with our kids, our kids need to be with our teachers. And we are going to do that as safely as possible. I've heard from Shonda say that we're able to make that safe for our, our teachers. Um, we've got vaccines on the way. We've got a contingency plan for those Thursdays and Fridays that, or that Thursday and Friday. So I cannot, absolutely cannot support pushing the start of school off anymore. I can't, I can't. And I very much appreciate your points, George. Um, but I, I have faith in you and your staff and our administrative team. But I, I have faith in you and your staff and our administrative team and Shonda and our COVID team to make this work. And I am going to hand that back to you to do what you feel you can for our community and for our kids. Cause I think that's really important. And Nikki, I see you in the queue as well as Karsten.
So first I want to just really remind everybody that small percentage we keep getting emailed from parents does not represent all parents. I just want to make sure that that is clear. Second of all, I want to thank George, um, really advocating on behalf of your staff. Unfortunately, with how things have gone, the back and forth, back and forth. I just hope that this point from here on out is a learning experience that we all can grow from and bringing everybody to the table at decision-making time. So I just, I'm not in favor of the, the, the go stop, go stop, go stop. We adults, we, we can pick up and we can use each other as support during this time if we need it, but I feel comfortable in the plan that we have in moving forward. Um, it's our children that don't have those tools maybe, and they're lacking their support at this time that I'm really concerned about. So that's just what I had to say. So I'm I'm done speaking.
Thank you for saying that Nikki. And I apologize. I was looking down my list and I, I was going to get to you. So thank you for, for putting your name in the queue. And Karsten, if you could wrap it up, and then I think we need to move forward in our agenda.
Yeah, I just have a, a reminder that regardless of the vote on this particular motion, uh, we should still probably consider Friday, March 26th. Because you know, even if the motion passes, we start everyone April 5th. You know, we'll still have teachers and, and other staff members in the building on March 26th, just with half the, the number of students. So just a reminder of that.
Arlen?
Thank you. I just jumped off the fence. Told you I want to know where I landed. We made a decision to go back to school on the 22nd. Yes, there are concerns with it, but we cannot continue being a wishy washy board. We made this decision. I'm going to be in full support of continuing on as we did in our vote a couple of weeks back. And I will be supporting, uh, continuing on as we originally planned. As far as, um, Karsten on that Friday or whatever, I think, uh, well, I'm willing to address that later. I don't know how to do it at this point, but I will be voting to, I'll be voting against the motion. I'll be supportive of a motion to continue on if we need to make a motion. Thank you.
Yeah. Nikki and then Holly.
Yeah, I'm not sure what's worth to do about what Karsten had stated, but I am willing to support Karsten's recommendations on that Friday.
Yep. Holly?
I just jumped off the fence with Arlen on his side. And I do support the original plan with the misnomer that flexibility is the key. And if something has to stop or cancel, or the bus route doesn't get there on time because there's a sick bus driver, or we have to be very gracious and forgiving to the little things that might pop up that will feel very big. But if we stick to the 22nd and move it forward with all intents and purposes, that things will go as planned, knowing they may not. I can support that and Karsten's recommendation from previous.
Okay. So the motion on the table was made by Anna and seconded by Holly to move the starting bait, starting date back for students to April 5th. So we will go ahead with the four plus one plan. So we'll go ahead and vote on that motion. Starting with Mr. Derrick's.
No.
Anna Ostendorf?
Yes.
Holly Tower?
No.
Jennifer Tift?
No.
Jim Bryant?
No.
Nikki Buck?
No.
And chair votes no. So that motion fails. One to six. I don't know that we need another motion on start dates of school because it has already been voted on. And so that's already established. Yeah. And so it sounds like our board is in agreement that we will leave it to the administrative team and Karsten Anderson to decide the best way to approach Thursday and or Friday of that week. Arlen?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, do we need to make, uh, I, we probably don't, but I'm wondering if it would be appropriate to make a motion to give Karsten the authority to make adjustments as needed depending on staffing? Would that be appropriate to make a motion like that or needed?
Karsten, would you want that or?
Yeah, either. Either have the school board make the decision or give me the authority to. Say Lisa?
I just lost connection.
Okay.
I'm back.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay. Uh, we may want to double check to make sure everyone's back on because I think.
We, we were all last. Okay.
Yeah.
I thought it was just me. All right.
Arlen, you're back? Oh, I see him moving. So that's got to be a good sign.
I gave you a thumbs up, but I didn't.
Oh, yeah. George and Holly, are you both on?
Yes.
Okay. And Jim and Nikki?
Jim is not.
I never left.
Oh, you didn't? All right. Well, let's wait for Jim. I think he, uh, will be able to join us in a minute. Well, it looks like Anna's back and Shonda. And now I see Jim Bryant joined too. So is that everyone?
George, did you kick us all out of there? I got a new modem. I don't know. Maybe that's what it was.
Meeting adjourned.
So Pam?
Yeah.
Oh, go ahead.
I was just going to say Holly's name is in the queue at last that I see.
Um, just for sake of moving it forward, I don't necessarily think we need to give Karsten special powers to just kind of go about the business of the district. If it, you know, it is, this is part of the giving grace and, you know, kind of rolling with it, like with all intents and purposes, let's just keep it moving. That's where my thoughts are.
I'm sure I got cut off. What are we talking about?
Oh, we, the last discussion piece was if we needed to make a motion for Karsten to make decisions regarding uh, going, you know, making different decisions on, how, who said that? Arlen, you said it better than I did.
I asked if we needed to, uh, give Karsten, make a motion to give Karsten authority to make decisions on when, if there is a staffing shortage or something to that effect. I did not make a motion. I just asked a question and Karsten was responding when we got.
Say Pam, uh, we just lost the YouTube, uh, live streaming connection. Uh, could we pause for another couple of minutes while Lisa tries to figure it out?
Yes, let's recess till 7:26. So we'll give you five minutes recess.
All right. Thank you. Sorry for the trouble.